All right, well, if it's six o'clock, if you wouldn't mind start the recording, then we'll begin the meeting.
What's that? Pretty much.
You know where's the common call now?
I was gonna say, not what the Department of Health says, but that's what they say.
All right, so we're gonna call the meeting to order at 6:02 because we have a quorum. There are six of us here, and Brett is online, so that makes seven. Can I get someone to make a motion to review and accept the agenda, please?
Um.
Okay, thank you, Natalie. And Brent? All those in favor of the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Excellent, thank you. Communications with parents, citizens, and staff. I see that Stacy is online, but that's our principal from Lothrup. Is there anybody else here who might want to talk to us? No. Okay, then we're gonna continue moving on. Oh, although, before we move on too much further, as you noticed, we have a new member sitting here with us tonight, Greg Babcock. We approved him as our newest at-large member at our last meeting, and so it might be nice if we all just went around the table real quick and introduced ourselves, what town we represent, or what we're, and, you know, you know, if you have kids, or why you're on the board, or something like that. So Lauren, we'll start with you.
Hi, I'm Lauren. I represent Brandon. This is my first year doing this, and I'm doing this because I will eventually have children at this district. So, why not?
Excellent.
Hi, I'm Natalie Steen. I represent Brandon. I have four boys. And this is my second term on the school board.
Yep.
Uh, Greg knows me pretty well.
This is for the camera.
Oh, Paul. I'm an at-large seat from Pittsburgh. Three kids.
I'm Greg Babcock. I'm an at-large seat out of Pittsburgh. I have two kids, one's in a sophomore in UVM, and my other's an eighth grader here in Otter Valley.
Hi, I'm Renee Sanchez. I'm the interim superintendent.
I'm Lori Bertrand. I've been on the board for, I don't want to think about that. I have three kids, and, um, yeah. There you go.
Charlie Bryant, um, and the recording secretary of this school district for many years.
Brent Scarborough, at-large for Brandon. Six kids, three still at home. First time.
Great. Debbie?
Debbie Alexander, the assistant superintendent of curriculum instruction and assessment. Not on the board, but sitting on the sidelines.
Then if you have any questions, feel free to ask any one of us. So, okay, thank you.
Can we hit the got it?
Oh, yeah, and Brett, why don't you say who you are, too, for Greg's benefit?
Kobe.
Kobe?
Hello, hey Greg. Greg's my neighbor, so.
Ah.
So you know Brett all too well. He lives a couple houses down.
Nice. All right. So we are going to move on. We are having a presentation tonight on the fiscal year 2025 Continuous Improvement Plan preview. So I'm gonna turn it over to you, Renee.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, let me go ahead and share my screen. That is not what I want. There you go. So, let me make it. That is better. Okay, uh, well, good evening, everyone. Tonight, we are presenting a required document that the state has every district complete. Traditionally, it's completed every two years, but in this case, during COVID, they've been asking people to do it a little bit more often, and we'll get to describing what is in the future, but first, we just want to talk about the plan. So, this particular, okay, so tonight's presentation is just going to be what is the Continuous Improvement Plan. That's gonna be fairly quick. And then I'll hand it over to Debbie, and Debbie will go through our, what is in the Continuous Improvement Plan as far as our social-emotional learning, as far as our academic achievement. And then at the end, I'm gonna talk a little bit about something called equity supports that many schools and many districts around the state have to abide by due to certain components of their data. So, our Continuous Improvement Plan is called upon. It needs to be done because of the education quality standards, and we have to submit one pretty much every other year. And through that Continuous Improvement Plan, we are expected to look at our data, we're expected to come up with ways that we're going to improve upon that data. They actually recommend that we ask ourselves the five whys, so that we can get to the very root cause of what it is that we should be doing for our students. And so, just want to highlight the goals of the CIP. So, the goal is to improve student learning, to make sure that we have the right professional development for our staff, so that that way, if we have a goal of reading, or of literacy, or numeracy, that we're providing the proper professional development. And then we also, it also expects us to make sure that we're taking care of the students, not just academically, but also holistically. One of the other reasons why we need to present this tonight, but we were gonna present it anyway, is that it has to be approved by the board every year, and so we submitted it. It got approved by the AOE, but one of the contingencies is it has to be approved by the board, too. So, it gives us the opportunity to present it out to everyone. With that, I will call on Debbie to start the presentation.
Great. Thanks, Renee. So, as Renee mentioned, he gave a little bit of background about how we put this together, but we have two different areas that we're required to look at. Safe and healthy schools is one of them, academic is the other. We defined two different areas that we were looking at in this particular case. We're finding SEL needs, our tracking systems, how we find out which students that we identify, and how we're going to support them, as well as focusing on what we call universal instruction, sort of like what is the instruction that all students are going to get. Then we look at thinking about what are our strategies, sort of what are our measures, and then what are the resources that we need. So that's how we develop our plan. I'm not going to go through and read every single piece here, but I'm sort of gonna kind of give you an overview of what we sort of have here. Kevin?
Debbie, I think it might be helpful if you would spell out the acronyms, especially for newer board members. I know that SEL, Social Emotional Learning, because it's gotten into my head in the last five years, but I've spent, I just spent the last two or three minutes wondering what LEA meant.
Yes. Local Educational Agency.
Thank you.
Yes. So that was actually asked at the last board meeting, so I will be very, very, very on point with making sure that I try not to use any acronyms. Thank you, good point, Kevin. So, when we think about social-emotional learning, it's thinking about what is that instruction that we're gonna use in the classroom and from our school counselors. So our school counselors definitely go into all of our K-6 classrooms, and then sometimes into our, we're pushing more into our middle school classrooms as well. So you did receive, I believe, with your, with your board packet, the actual CIP plan, so all of the next two slides and some of the other slides are involved in that. So we, as Renee mentioned, we start with data, and I'm gonna sort of take you through a few slides of one of the data points, well, it's not one data point, but one of the systems that we have. This is called our SWISS data. SWISS really doesn't stand for anything, that I know of, but SWISS happens to be our collection agency, or our collection portal, if you will, and it collects all of our behavioral data. And what it is, is it's a referral system. It tells us that we need sort of help for a student, and it collects all of the behaviors that rise to the level of majors and minors. And what I'm gonna sort of show you is, this is for all of OVUU for last year, and I wanted to just kind of show you sort of what it can capture. It can capture sort of what behaviors, so how many majors and how many minors we had last year, and then it can capture, next slide is, sort of, the next is sort of what kind of behaviors. Sort of, this one that I happen to highlight is not an uncommon one, a minor behavior, defiance or noncompliance. And what we can do when we look at these is that, when you have your multi-tiered system of support teams, your MTSS teams, they can look at these at the school levels and at the district levels and determine sort of, if you think about those universal, and when we look at our universal instruction, sort of, what do we need to work on? We look at those high points there, sort of what do we need to work on with all students? We look at like broad data like this. We can also look at when it's happening. This happens to be the months of the year, so we look ahead. We can look back at many years and say, oh, remember, like, the month of, like, when I was a principal, I always, you can see January sort of pops when we come back from break, so there's always sort of a rerollout of all of our supports in January. This is a pretty typical, pretty typical sort of roller coaster of how the year goes. That's not unusual, but if you don't sort of put your supports in place, that roller coaster has much higher highs and not so many lows. We want the lows. We don't want the highs, so.
And so just calling that out is, looking at October, we should be really making sure that our systems are in place, so that that way, we don't have, it's not the most, it's not the month that has the largest number of referrals.
Right, exactly. That's exactly right.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please do.
Are you going to explain how these are, referrals are made?
Yes, I can, sure.
Okay, so, and what major or minor is, and?
Yep, I can, yeah. So, a, a, so we have, so all of our schools are PBIS schools, which are Positive Behavior Intervention Support Schools. It is been a, it has been sort of a structure that the state of Vermont has been in support of for, gosh, almost 20 years now. It's not a new, it's not something new, it's actually been around for many years, and the idea is that we really set expectations for learners, and when they're not meeting those expectations, then we actually put in a referral for support, meaning that the student is not meeting expectations, and we're saying to the student support team, we're letting you know that this student is not meeting expectations. So, later on the slideshow, you'll sort of see that there are different outcomes that could come out of that. Based on the student not meeting the expectations, is that something that is just sort of a reminder? Is that a need of a strong consequence and education? Is it just more education? Sort of what is the response? Education should always go with it. Like more, like more education? Is it repair work? Repair work should always go with it. You know, we can almost always guarantee that when something goes wrong, something has been fractured, a relationship has been fractured when something goes wrong. Many times, we, you know, we work on this, but, you know, you think of the term demerit, you know, like, you'll, you have a demerit. A referral shouldn't feel, not saying it doesn't, but it shouldn't feel like somebody's in trouble because they received a referral. It should be that we're sort of saying that this is happening, and we need to sort of, you know, find out what's not going well for that student. I'm not saying a student doesn't just make a poor choice, and, you know, that's just how it goes that day, but the system is designed for tracking, tracking sort of those behaviors, so that when they are ongoing, we can wrap around students that sort of, you know, we can see from the data need, need more support.
And so, to your, thank you, Debbie.
Good chat.
And so with your question about majors and minors, so typically minors are behaviors or incidents that can be taken care of in the classroom?
Yeah.
And majors are when either a principal or other support group needs to come in and help intervene. And so, that is what, how these end up getting broken up.
Thank you, Renee. I went way past that part.
Oh, no worries.
Okay, we look at days of the week. We can tell data from, let's see, what's the next slide? We can tell by the hour. A lot of times, the days of the week in the hour is when we're looking at an individual student. That's often helpful for individual students, as well as classes, sometimes a whole school. In this case, I just happened to, I was actually looking at them, seeing if there was anything interesting that I found of interest, like, huh, that's interesting. I happened to pick the hallway. Class, interestingly enough, was the highest, when I went through all of the schools in the two district, classroom was the highest of all of them, so the classroom was the highest.
Within this program, too, you can also, you can look at two variables at the same time, so it gives you the ability to look at, say, playground, and see when, what time of day are there more issues taking place? Is it in the morning, or is it in the afternoon? Is it a particular time? And so that allows you to make sure that you have your, your resources available where they need to be placed.
Right, yes.
This includes data for elementary and high school combined?
Yes.
But you can separate it, right?
Yes, you can separate it, yeah.
Because I would guess maybe more issues on playground than Otter Valley, right?
Exactly, right. I could, I could have pulled, like, there's so many different configurations I could have pulled. My intent here is just to sort of give you an overview of what we can pull, but there's just so many pieces, different ways that we can pull this. So when we think about an individual student, this is just an example, we can, if we're at a meeting, if we have an individual student meeting, we, for example, we can say, so it looks like this student, we look at the highest bars on the furthest graph on the left, the primary incident code, it looks like this student's highest need is within defiance, contact with others. When I looked at that, that was a minor, so a minor with contact means that they're probably nudging in the line, so that probably tells me it's one of our elementary students. If it was major contact, that means probably this is involved, so, but, you know, and there's a difference, that is the big difference. They also are having challenges with inappropriate language, and then the other piece, you would have to go into the, into that to see what the notes are for that. We can also see where, where there was, where it looks like the classroom and playground were the highest locations, and then we can see that right around midday is when that student is having the hardest time, so that's where we build in breaks for that student. That's where we build in extra support for that student. That's where we may say, let's do eyes on, on the playground. We already can see that the playground is a challenge, we can see the time is a problem, so we actually put supports there. We put, we do something before the child goes out onto the playground, and we put something in place on the playground. So that's how we can use this data to our advantage. Any questions? Any more questions about the SWISS data? And this is all part of our plan. Yes, sorry. Yeah, no?
I know a lot about this data. So, what I was, do you ever look at it at the teacher level? So, instead of just the student? So do you look at trends in teachers? So you may find that one instructor may have challenges with defiance, and maybe you need to help that teacher with professional development in those areas.
So, there is actually, there is actually, actually Renee and I were just talking about this before we came over. So one of the places, one of the spaces here, I mean, there were many, many more of these here, and one of them is who is reporting it? So we can tell who is reporting that, and we need to look at that. So if it's the classroom teacher in an elementary school, you would kind of expect that they may be the highest reporter. If it happens to be that the highest reporter is one of the, let's say, integrated arts teachers, then you may wonder why, and I don't want to pick on integrated arts teachers, but I'm just, I'm using that because they see them less frequently, then you might wonder why that's a problem. It could be the, the environment, it could be, you know, it could be, you know what I mean, a personality sort of thing. But yes, we have all of that data, and that's all looked at when, when we're reviewing this data.
One of the things that also comes out is, when you're looking at who on the campus has written the most referrals, sometimes it ends up being the principal, or sometimes it ends up being a behavior interventionist, because they're the first person on the scene and they're able to record it. However, you are correct that there are, we do have to look at patterns, because there may be instances where the cutoff for what defiance is for one person may be a totally different cutoff for defiance that what another person has. And so those are the things that we have to look into, because if a student has many, many more defiance referrals than another student does, well, we don't want that student to get labeled and have to live with that, because future teachers are thinking that this student is, has so many defiance.
And we also want to help that teacher.
Absolutely.
Right. When we get to a slide that says Team of Teams, remind me, because I'm going to tell you about something that is actually going to help support that, so. So we mentioned the, how PBIS has been in the state of Vermont for almost 20 years, and the BEST Institute is what supports PBIS. We actually had 21 OVUU staff go from four of our schools. Barstow sent a team as well. That's a lot of, we send a lot of staff to the BEST Institute, and I'm, that's a huge amount. It's, it's a big deal for a district to have that many teams go. Usually, a district sends like one team. So this is a really big deal that we should be proud of, and that's not just this year. This has grown every single year, so I can't be any more thrilled that we have solid teams going from every single school, so, great stuff. And they're all in different places. PBIS is intended to, so there are, there's your universal level, your tier two and your tier three are your intensive level, as far as like what you're ready to support with your tiers and what systems you build, and it's sort of a rise and fall, as in, just when you implement your top tier, you have to run back down and tend to the other tiers, sort of like you have to keep tending to all of your tiers and make sure that they're all solid and that they're all well-cared-for, because it's not just you get to the top tier and say, oh, we're all done. You have to keep making sure that they're all in place and your systems are running very well. Yes?
How long is the training when they go to these?
So this is typically, it's a three-day training, but there's trainings that happen all year long for it, and it, you have to keep it going in your building, you have to roll it out every single year. So when I was at Lothrup, we rolled it out every single year. We, we talked about it in faculty meetings, you have to bring it up, you know, halfway through the year, you have to talk about it all the time, because as a teacher, you get busy and, you know, you forget things, and you've got to just, you know, it's, it's the job of keeping it alive all the time.
BEST always schedules the last week of June, because they know that all schools have finished by that point, and it's run out of the University of Vermont.
UVM, yeah.
And so they're the ones who put it on, and they bring in their people along with other consultants, and typically, because the state really values this PBIS system, that there are grant funds available to said people that we use on a regular basis.
Yes, we actually scoop up a lot of their grant funds and use them. Yeah.
So I have a question that's maybe the other end of the spectrum from what Natalie asked. Not teachers who over-report, but teachers who under-report or don't report, who are maybe viewed as like pushovers, or teachers that kids can get away with anything in their classroom, which I feel like could be a breeding ground for bullying and harassment, if, you know, if there's kids in the classroom who are, you know, constantly, you know, the brunt of whatever, and, and it's not being reported because, for whatever reason, is that something that, I mean, does that pop, you know?
It does. So, that's looked at as well. I can tell you as an administrator, that's part of the administrator's job of, when you look and you see that there's a class that has sort of no referrals, you kind of know that it's just not possible to have no referrals, so those are sort of digging in and having those conversations about, so tell me what's happening in your classroom, and, you know, what do you need to make sure that we're having these referrals happen? You know, and you, yeah, that, that's a piece that has to happen, but your, the PBIS team looks at that, should be looking at that data on a monthly basis. So it's your PBIS team and your multi-tiered system of support, your MTSS team is looking at that as well, so.
Another question.
So what, what triggers notifying parents? I'm assuming that you're not, I mean, there was like several thousand incidents there, so I'm assuming that every single one of those is reported to parents.
So minors are not, there's no way a minor, all minors could be reported to parents. Minors are typically reported to parents like during parent-teacher conferences as a part of, like, your child's having difficulty sort of standing in line, or something like that. But majors should be reported to parents. That is something that should be reported to parents. It's often reported through the student support professionals, or they're reported through the principal.
Okay. And then, do we do like trending, week over week, to try to compare? I mean, like, for example, this year, right? We had a bunch of funds expire, we may have different faces, different people, less people, less help, you know, depending on how things are all, you know, sorting out in the schools, so do we track this week over week to see like if we're trending in the wrong direction, or if there's something to be concerned about?
So, meaning how often do we look at?
Yeah, so I mean, you know, we've got a few weeks' worth of data now, right? So, I mean, this is a little bit different than it has been for the last few years with the level of staff and everything else, so are we seeing anything concerning, or?
Well, I actually just looked at seventh grade data, because we had the transition team. They had exactly the same number of referrals they did last year, this time, so. So the PBIS team does look at it monthly, and it's something that your principals look at, so it's looked at formally and informally, I would say that. It's looked, it's looked at, it's looked at formally, informally, by student, by classroom, formally and informally throughout the year, so. And then, like I said, when we get to Team of Teams, I'm gonna add where we are gonna be looking at it more as a district. So some, just some things that we, that are part of the plan that are coming up. We are going to be using an easier, that's more connected to sort of our platform, we're gonna be using a screener called My Sabers, that is the same log-on as our STAR assessments. You may have heard your, your kids talking about, it's time for STAR assessments. That is our new SEL screener. We are gonna still use Panorama for a climate and culture survey. As a matter of fact, families will get that as well, right, Renee?
Yep.
So look for that in the next little bit, we're sorting through setting that up. The Vermont State has finally put together a model for school counselors, and our K-6 school counselors this year are going to be designing a model for RNESU, and they, it was just coincidental that there is a class that's happening. And they, it was just coincidental that there is a class that's happening, um, up in Colchester. All of them, K through seven, um, all but, all or all but one are taking the class and then they're, and the class happens to be doing that. It's crazy that that was happening. But they're going to be designing a model for us. That was the work I was going to have them do and now they're getting credit for it. Uh, but the thing with the school counselor is they have a lot of different roles that they do. They are, they work, they teach lessons in the classroom. They also provide short-term, um, mini, uh, counseling. It's never meant to be long-term. Um, they're not therapists. They also do small group SEL work. They, um, you know, work on your MTSS team, multi-team, multi-tiered system of support. They do, there's a ton of work that school counselors do, and they're often sort of underused. So they're going to really work together on creating a, um, model so that all of our schools are on the same page and we're all using them in a similar way. So we're also, um, so these are sort of the programs that we're using. We already have some of these in place. Prevent Child Abuse Vermont is a K six program that our school counselors use. They're already using second step, and we purchased with grant money some second step materials for grades two through six to use in their classrooms, for classroom teachers last year for this year. And the Little Spot of Emotions is a, an SEL, social emotional learning, um, sort of mini-program for our kinder through the beginning of second grade to use. Kids love it. It's all based on the CASL, social emotional learning standards. Um, and our school counselors, part of their work is going to be connecting the CASL standards for social emotional learning with these programs. And so that teachers will be able to report some of that workout to families this year. So you should be getting more in, on, in K six and understanding of where our learners are at. So Team of Teams, I mentioned that before. So one of the, one of the pieces in the, uh, in our school, in our SIP is Continuous Improvement Plan, is that we have a strong multi-tiered system of support. And that, one of the tenants of that is effective collaboration. You can have all the teams that you want, but if they don't talk together, then, then they're not effective. So we have developed a system of how, um, they can all talk together and making sure that we have all the right people on the right teams and that they are sort of scheduled so that they can all talk together. The things to pay attention to that are in the, not that these aren't all important, but to kind of give you a look at what's sort of in our Continuous Improvement Plan is, if you look at, we have the, um, school multi-system tiered, a support tiered, multi-tiered system of supports team, and then the Rutland Northeast one. So those two, each school will have a team, and then Rutland Northeast will have a team. And then you notice that each of the, uh, Rutland Northeast will have a PBIS team and each school will have a PBIS team. So each school will be reviewing PBIS data and the district will be reviewing PBIS data. At the district level, I was actually, even Renee doesn't know this yet, I was speaking with Tyler today, I know, right? Um, I was speaking with Tyler today and we were talking about, um, we're grabbing all of our matrices which talk about our expectations and making sure that they, at our first PBIS meeting for RNESU, talking about making sure that they all align. Like can we make sure that, um, sort of what, um, we think about what is a disrupting behavior, like what does that look like in all places? So that we can sort of, um, begin to align. That's long work. That will not be an overnight thing, but how do we align that a little more? So, sorry, I wasn't hiding that Renee, I just hadn't gotten to you.
That's fine.
Uh, it's good news. It's good news. So this is, like I said, this is how we communicate with one another. Um, one of the things that is really great work, if you see down below here, we had 192 EST, that's Educational Support Team, plans. Um, that's one of the other things that's in the Continuous Improvement Plan, is making sure that our systems are strong. Um, it's not so much that we write a whole bunch of EST plans, it's that we are making sure that we're providing really strong interventions in the classroom, and we're doing everything that we can, and we're supporting students well, and we are gathering data, and we're then supporting them well when they get to, um, needing intervention outside of the classroom.
Are the ESTs for individuals or for individuals and classrooms? Just individuals?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Just individuals.
They're for individuals, yes. And that's for across the, across the entire, um, OVUU, so.
Let me add two things. So one, I am really excited about this kite that we have going on here, um, because it really emphasizes not just the collaboration, but the communication. And prior to this year, um, I don't believe we had EduClimber. So EduClimber is our, um, is effectively our data warehouse, and it, it takes data from multiple platforms and puts it in one place. So that when you're talking about that individual student, instead of having to go to five different platforms plus Google Sheets and, and other locations, um, it's all there. And so that way you can have a really effective conversation about what needs to go into the educational support plan.
Right.
Um, and then just as I love to say every time I talk about ESTs, ESTs are not about what the student is lacking, it is about what the system is lacking. So as a result, if we, we have to monitor, if we're having maybe a similar issue with multiple students, then it's something that we really have to look in and make sure that we're taken care of at the, at the system level.
Right. And to, so no, we, we weren't using EduClimber. We did purchase it last year, but we spent all last year gathering every piece of data that we could for the past many years and dumping it into EduClimber. So we're just ready to go this year. Um, this one not as long, but academic achievement, highly just as important. Um, we have two goals, a reading goal, um, by June 2026, 70% of students be reading at or above grade level as measured by state and local assessments and math. By June of 2026, I would like this higher, but our math scores unfortunately are, we have a lot of work to do there. 60% of our students will demonstrate grade level skills as measured by state and local assessments. We definitely want that higher in years to come as well. And again, you have all this information, I'll give you kind of an overview.
This is the data we shared before, I don't know if it was last month at this, at this meeting, but we've shared it before to show where our, where our students are in reference to, um, the, the, the percentage of proficiency in each grade level and overall.
As you can tell, we have, we definitely have some growth to meet that 70, that 70% without question.
And then collectively, uh, collectively, if we're, if we're, if our baseline from last year is 36% proficient, uh, then, but like, as I mentioned last time, that yellow band is, that yellow band is students who are within one year of being on grade level. So it's really important for us to make sure that we focus, uh, and make sure who those students are, uh, and bring them along as well. And make sure that we have high growth, um, for students who are in the red. That's English. And so this is our, this is our data by grade for math, and that's why, and you'll see here, this is why we want to make sure that, uh, we want to take two years to, so that we have a better opportunity for us to get, um, more of our students to grade level. Cause it, it will be, uh, an area where we will have to work closely together to make it happen.
So you submit this data for the CIP?
Yes.
And they won't look at any other data, just the Vermont assessments, state level assessments?
They will look at our local assessments.
Yeah, I send, I send them a ton of data. So I have to do what's called a data inventory, and I took all of our STAR data, I take Anna Dodel data, I send them a whole bunch of data, um, just for tonight's purpose, I didn't pull that all together.
Yeah, cause I don't think that's a, you know, shows clearly, right? It's just one assessment.
Well, our STAR data does, our STAR data is pretty close to this.
And STAR data is?
STAR data is what we do three times, three times a year.
But it's a state assessment, right?
No, it's what's given, it's.
By the teachers.
So it's a computerized assessment that we do three times a year in the classrooms.
So we can build interventions where the students are needed.
The intent is that we give the assessments and we instruct based on those assessments. But a lot of that is getting better at that as well. So, and not just giving the assessments and carrying on. So just sort of like what are we doing in light of that data? We talked last year in the fall about finding a vendor, vendor to provide, um, professional development and ELA for K six teachers as well as interventionists and special educators at the, well, K 12 level and pre-K 12 level. We have, we did find that vendor, the Reading League, they have been phenomenal, and they really are focusing on evidence-based practices. And if you look to the left, it's really kind of hard to see, I tried to find the best graphic that they had. It's really, their premise is that it's, um, everything that we do now is digging into finding what part is, what part of sort of reading is, what part of like literacy are, are our students missing? So we often say they have a hard time comprehending, but it's not comprehending. It's either what part of language comprehension, what part of word recognition are they missing? So we have assessments now that they can do, and they can sort of see, ah, it's here. And then we sort of move in at that piece and instruct there. So that's going to take some time for our teachers to learn that, um, but we're well underway. We've had, um, they've been coming and working with us since last March. We met in March, June, August, and our next, uh, time with them is in October, and we have some consultants that are also meeting with us at different times throughout the year, and we have three or four more sessions with them. So, um, so work is good. We also have, um, I've linked it, it'll go out, um, when they send everything out to you. We have a local assessment, local comment assessment, um, schedule, so that's the acronym, that's the name for it. Uh, when I mentioned the STAR Renaissance, STAR assessments, this is part of our plan as well, to build data literacy so that we can assess our students and then do something with the data. Again, as Renee mentioned, we have a data system now so that teachers are not having to sort of look for the data. It's all right there and they can find it quickly. Uh, we take data in math and in reading three times a day. Again, EduClimber is the place that it all is stored. And we also have what's called Freckle for intervention for grades K through 12, and then LELLO, which is a reading program for K through two, and that's intervention. Some of the K six, um, schools are sort of looking at it saying, we might want to buy that for all of the, all of our learners. So they're sort of dabbling and potentially doing that. And that, it is a tool that can be purchased for all of, all of the kiddos. So, um, so that's something that we're looking at right now. So next steps in ELA, continuing our professional development. We are looking to review and purchase a new program that is K five. Right now, we only have a program K two, and what that does is that if you're not sort of reading by second grade, it's really not helpful for those students that aren't figuring it out until third grade. So it doesn't support well. Uh, so we're looking for a K five program, um, and that's going to be done by the use of teacher leaders, facilitators of teaching and learning, administrators, um, and then we'll come up with a plan for rollout, implementation, all of that. Obviously, the purchasing of that will be dependent upon funding for the following year. And then, um, math, thinking about, oops, wrong direction. Thinking about, uh, uh, middle school math specifically, I thought there was a, it'll be, might be on the next one. Thinking about middle school math, we, um, want, we are exploring, looking at a middle school math program, seven, actually six through eight. So we have already purchased a, um, a revised version of Bridges. We happened, happened upon, Brenda would not like that. We received a, we applied for and received a grant last year for $75,000 to, um, refurbish our Bridges Two, um, materials and then upgrade to Bridges Three. So we have a whole new program for Bridges Three and the professional development to go with it. So we're solid there. And then we really want to find, um, see if our current tools that we're using in grade six are working, or grade six through eight are working, or if we want to go with something different. We want to see, is there a clear path to eighth grade algebra if we want that? Do the assessments line well? Is there good professional development? Because our data in sixth grade and in eighth grade just is not making sense coming out of fifth grade. It's not making sense to us. So we really want to, um, explore that more. Kevin?
Is there a, for lack of a better term, a math cliff where kids just decide they don't like math anymore and they're not going to pay attention to it?
So that's kind of what we're, that's what we're struggling with right now, is that it's not making sense that, um, you know, when you look at Common Core, they sort of chunk it up into K five, and then it shifts to like a six, 12 band, um, really six, eight, and then, um, you know, nine through 12 goes off in this sort of different disciplines. But, um, I think it's, that's what's not making sense to us, and we're thinking about the fact that, um, six through eight is not really using a consistent program. So it's, um, yeah.
Kevin, in my experience, it's like Debbie said, it's, it's after fifth or during fifth, but then also ninth. So as, depending upon what is, um, what the curriculum is being used in the first year of high school compared to what the test is testing. So, um, what happens in middle school, which is why we're looking at the six to eight, making sure that we're keeping it aligned to the Common Core so that when we get to ninth grade, um, where the students already have what they need, so that that way they're, uh, they, when they get to ninth grade, they're prepared, and if they want to keep going in math or a long way in math, we want to make sure that they're able to do so.
And I definitely think you, I mean, we all, I mean, I taught middle school, you have to keep it, you have to keep it alive in, in six, seventh, and eighth without question. Um, I think that's, that's fair to say. So I just mentioned that we received that grant, um, very excited about that, and they're allowing us to do the professional development next year so that we could focus on ELA this year and, um, and the, uh, math next year. But we do have, uh, we had pilot people last year, we have early adopters this year, and we still have a math PLC rolling this year, people that just wanted to dive in. Um, I'm actually attending a cohort this Friday, um, to get us rolling with all of the math, so Lori?
I'm, I'm just curious what, if you could explain Bridges Two, Bridges Three, I mean, is it just an, is it, what is the difference between Bridges One, Bridges Two, Bridges Three?
So I do not have a whole lot of experience with Bridges One.
Okay.
But the difference between Bridges Two and Bridges Three is that Bridges Three, I feel is a lot more aligned, I feel is a lot more aligned with Common Core. Bridges Two, if I were to guess, kind of slap the sticker on, um, just thinking of timing. But Bridges Three is a lot more engaging. It's also aligned more with the practices of, and that's the big piece, is that, um, is that Common Core, um, has math practices, um, and, um, understanding things conceptually. And that is the big, that is the big piece of Common Core and math. And that is what they have really upped their game in with Bridges Three. So they've done a really good job of that, and, and they've upped their game with engagement. But a lot of places slap the sticker on. But a lot of places slapped the sticker on of Common Core and said, sort of, we're good.
Okay.
That's my guess with two. So.
Okay. Thank you, Debbie. So I'll be really quick on what equity supports are. So as part of the state's, um, application to the federal government so that we can have our Title One, Title Two, Title Three funds, um, the state had to submit a, a plan on how it would monitor academics and everything else throughout the state. So, um, so there is an accountability plan that is visible on the AOE website. It's called the, the AOE Snapshot or the School Snapshot. When SBACK finished a few years ago, they held off on releasing the scores for eighteen months instead of really quickly. Um, and so they, uh, released the data for the Snapshot. But then the next year, we had to take the VT cap for the first time. And so they released that data within, uh, within three months of one another. So the Snapshot measures, um, academic achievement, and it measures safe and healthy schools. It measures, um, operations, it measures a lot of different pieces. What we're talking about today is equity supports. So within the Snapshot, the state looks at, how are you performing overall? But then, how are you performing one group compared to a different group? And so that, that way, the state can determine whether or not there is an achievement gap between one group and another group. So Vermont has very small schools, and in some cases, very small districts. In order for there to be an accountability subset, you have to have twenty-five students in that student group in order for it to show up in the accountability system. So because the accountability system takes into account, uh, race, ethnicity, free reduced lunch, uh, disability status, multilingual, multilingual status, um, and they created a different set called Historically Marginalized and Historically Privileged. Historically marginalized refers to students who, uh, who meet any one of those previous characteristics. So what they will do is they will take the students who are part of that group and they will, they will take, uh, they will subtract that, or they will take the, 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 for this case, the privileged group, subtract the score from the marginalized group. And if it's a certain number, then they come back and they report to the, to the districts, you need to work on it. And so we are, there are many schools, there are many districts throughout the state of Vermont for whom that applies. So, uh, we are, so we have, um, we are what are known as Equity One schools, and that's gonna be NeShabi and it'll be Lothrop. Uh, and they are Equity One schools for historically marginalized students. As a supervisory union, we are, we are under Equity One supports for free reduced lunch, special education, and historically marginalized students. So that gives us really our marching orders on what we need to make sure that we're monitoring not only this year, but into the future. So why does it make, why is it something other than just doing it for the, for the right, for the, for goodness sake? And, and doing the right thing? With this being part of an accountability system, because in order to get this Title One money, there has to be some teeth eventually. While these teeth are not very sharp, if it, if it keeps going for years and years and years, there is a, there are some teeth that could come on and, um, uh, cause changes to how the district goes about its business. But that's many years into the future. So before then, we would like to take care of it so that we're no longer on this list of systems. So as part of Equity One schools, this is what we're receiving from the AOE. You know, we have conversations, we go to meetings, um, they make sure they help us with our continuous improvement plan. And they've made sure that we turn one in every year. Going into this coming year, uh, when you're approving a, uh, a CIP in May, um, you will not only be doing one for our NESU, but you'll be doing one for every individual school. Because they've gone back to that, which was the, 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 the way of doing business before COVID. So, uh, and I, much of this, in this, is just, really just goes about telling you what will happen if, if you don't take care of business. And it's, it, doing the math, potentially it's, could be anywhere from five to eight years. But we don't wanna take that long to fix it. We wanna make sure that we get it done as soon as possible.
So is everybody starting in Equity One, or are some people already in Equity Two and Three?
That's a wonderful question. So, uh, remember how I mentioned that they released, or that the state released two snapshots within three months of each other?
Mm-hmm.
In some cases, some schools were Equity One in that first one. Then in the next one, three months later, uh, where they haven't even had the opportunity to change much, they got moved to Equity Three.
Oh.
And so it is a, we're fortunately not among those. There are three schools in the entire state to whom that applied. Um, there are also beyond the equity supports. If schools are not doing well in their performance levels, they get, uh, you can see that, that they become a comprehensive support school. And that's when the state comes in and actually gives you a little bit of money to make sure that you're doing, um, you're doing everything you can to support all students. But we're not there, we're not in that group. Um, along, uh, these particular slides, again, these are, because Lothrop and NeShabi are identified, um, these are the specific things that we're asking them to do. Similarly, we just wanna make sure that they're, by, the reading is seventy percent, math is sixty percent. Um, and at the end of the day, we wanna make sure that we're using data, we're creating goals to support our Equity One, um, designation, making sure that we have a campus improvement plan that's going to help us with our Equity One designation and that we're doing progress monitoring along the way. And that's the incre, we, we have to make sure that we're looking regularly at how our students are doing. And so, and I'm very happy that our first window of STAR is closing really soon. So we'll have that data and we'll be able to look at that data along with our VT cap data from last year. Uh, and we'll be able to, to chart the course for each of the schools, which is wonderful. Well, for me, it's wonderful, cuz I love doing that. So. Any questions?
Um, my only question is, is to, where it says prioritized, um, prioritize something, prioritize go, goal, prioritize goal. So how do you come up with those goals? Is that based on what the state has already said, you need to work on this, and that's how you come up with a goal? How do you, how do you determine what the continuous improvement plan is going to measure?
So we, um, there's actually a whole needs assessment-
Okay.
-that they, uh, the state provides to us. Um, and, um, they have several protocols that you can follow, uh, which you try to get down to the root cause of why your data looks the way it does. And then, um, it advises you that, okay, so now you're there. If you really want to change the outcome of what, of that root cause, what do you have to do to get there? And it encourages you to use smart, smart goals, which is essentially making sure that you have bite-sized progress, uh, monitoring pieces so that that way you can get to the point where you're going to achieve the outcome that you want.
Okay. Other questions?
Now that, um, the pre-reduced metric has been redefined, are they, are they coming up with something to replace that?
They have, I have not heard anything different yet.
My other question is more theoretical. Uh, let's say that we move eighty percent of the kids into proficient. But, uh, a significant number of the group that doesn't make that, there's an historically marginalized, um, would, would we be in more trouble with the state, potentially?
We would not be in more trouble, but we would have to do everything we can to make sure that we continue to close that gap. The only time that we, well, not the only time, but one of the things that we could be in trouble with is listed here under Equity Two, is if we don't close the gap or the only reason why the gap is closing is because the, the all-student group isn't going backwards. So, uh, we don't want that to happen. But that is, they've identified that as something to, you know, don't mess with.
Any other questions?
You don't think of any right now, or you have some come up later, send them to Lori and she'll send them to me? Cuz I, well, Debbie and I both love talking about this, as you can tell. But, uh, we are always happy to take questions on this because we're considering this to be baseline, our, this is our benchmark, and we wanna make sure that we're going forward from here.
Well, and this is your continuous improvement plan for this current year? And then we will approve a new one, you said, in May?
Correct.
Okay.
So you'll have, we won't have VT cap data in May. We'll have, we'll have data from, uh, three, um,
Stars.
Three stars, we'll ha, and at the high school, in addition to the, the star, we'll also have, uh, PSAT data from ten and eleven.
And we also, we also have a lot of other screeners that I didn't mention. But we have a lot of other screeners that come from the Reading League and the primary grades that will, will we, that will have as well. It'll help us.
At, at some point in time, I think it would be great for us to share that, you know, what, um, how we're serving our pre-K through two. So that people know, so that the board and, and the audience see that it takes a lot of time to do literacy work. Because you have to do it individually. Uh, but there are amazing pieces of data and, uh, the relationships that get built between teachers and students during that time are, it's just incredible.
So I've got a statement and then another question. Uh, statement is, you said, probably in the first meeting we had, that you wanted to get some specific metrics to be able to get to. And it looks like you've done that, and so, uh, that's a great step. And it's nice to see and look forward to it, uh, seeing the results. Uh, the other question is something you very briefly alluded to tonight about, uh, kids getting consistently in trouble in that, how do we prevent them from getting a reputation as a bad kid from second to third to eighth grade? Uh, could you talk about that a little more?
Uh, potentially, I, 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 I would say, hmm, when there's a repeated, um, repeated instances of misbehavior, whatever the case may be. Unfortunately, because we are humans, we have a tendency to label. And when we label, uh, students end up, students or teachers or others end up having an instance, an instance where they become, um, something that others don't view well. And so it is incredibly important that throughout our system, um, not just our system, but through the entire state of Vermont and the entire, and the entire country, we wanna make sure that when I'm speaking of what defiance is, it's the same definition as what Laura uses, it's the same definition of what Debbie uses. So that that way, if there's a case where, um, uh, it actually has to be applied to a student or a different student, that it's always going to be on equal footing. And so, um, this is very important SEL training that we're trying to provide to our teachers and trying to build, make sure that we're having that engagement level with our students so that they get to know students for who they are and know why they do what they do.
Any other questions for Renee at this time? Okay. Thank you very much for that presentation, that was very insightful. Um, we are gonna move on. Um, unfortunately tonight, I, we were hoping that Brenda and Rich would be telling us the five most important things needed at each school, but they are not ready for that this evening. So, but we can talk a little bit more about our middle school model. Um, in your packet, there were links to, uh, both the middle school, uh, reports that we have from NBF. The first one was on, um, having a middle school here at Otter Valley. Either a separate building out in the old JV field or on the JV field, football field. Or, um, the other one, or the other place for, uh, here at Otter Valley was to actually add on to certain aspects of this building. So that's what that first, uh, middle school consolidation report is. The second one was on the Caverly site. And this board, um, upon seeing that and on talking with the people who lived in Pittsford, we determined that Caverly probably wasn't a good site because, um, getting electricity out there would be a problem, plus, um, the amount of traffic going up and down Plains Road and the fact that it was going to be going by Caverly Preschool, buses, um, probably wasn't a good place to put a, a middle school at this time. So what I'd like to do tonight is really kind of get into the meat and potatoes of what a middle school might look like here at Otter Valley. And how do we, what do we think that looks like? Do we think that looks like still only seventh and eighth graders? Is it actually pulling sixth grade into middle school here? Um, I think we need to determine what are, what that looks like before we can really determine what we need to do to facilities to make that happen. So at one time, the idea was that a, a perfect middle school model was five, six, seven, and eight. I think that has changed recently. And Renee, please chime in any point, but I think that is now six, seven, and eight.
It is six, seven, and eight.
Okay. Um, as we all know, uh, most of our elementary schools are bulging at the seams. So possibly bringing sixth grade here to Otter Valley would help alleviate some of that pressure. Um, but then again, we also have to see how it would, how this building would need to be reconfigured or, or determine what that looks like to keep sixth graders away from high school and, and whatnot. And we've already done some of that for seventh and eighth grade. Um, you know, some hallways are, are not accessible, um, for seventh and eighth grade right now to, so that they don't access the high school and vice versa. Um, but anyway, so that first report, which is, um, from August fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, you'll see that, um, they wrote a report. Uh, the first one was the super school, um, and the second one was the super campus. The super campus, I, I don't think that we could, and please, anybody can talk at this point, but I don't foresee us being able to get our community to swallow a brand-new building out on the JV field. So.
I don't see them swallowing anything.
Well, the, well-
They couldn't swallow the gym last time.
Right, well, and, and we wouldn't be doing this immediately anyway. I mean, this is like a three-year plan, three or four-year plan, maybe even five. Depending on how long it would take to get plans, yes, bah.
So for me, what makes sense is going this way with this building.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and then on top of it, you put lights for the baseball field. That's what I see.
That's what you see? Lights for the baseball field? Lights for the baseball field, that's all I heard from you, lights on the baseball field.
The length and the width that we could add, I think, don't, haven't, we have a plan for that, right?
We don't actually have a plan going that way. All they really, the plan that's here currently was to, um, do something extra to the east wing. I don't think we could go up and, and now with the mold, I just, I definitely don't think we could go up. Um, but there was talk about, um, doing more over on this side of the building. So, and how that would impact, you know, the driveway, um, being able to go around the entire campus. Um, but there is something to be said for going this way so that we would be able to not have to build a new cafeteria. And we wouldn't have to build a new, a new what?
You could-
Library.
Library.
Right, yeah, you could probably still use the library. Um, one thing that you probably want to definitely consider though is another gym.
Yeah.
So you could leave the road and they do catwalks across and-
Yes, absolutely.
So the road ought to change.
No, right, that's exactly right. That's exactly right.
You're going to have to change the cafeterias, might have the own cafeteria-
And the band room is still down here, so they wouldn't, you wouldn't need a new band room.
If you run a new gym, it goes on that building.
Mm-hmm.
The cafeteria goes on that building. I mean, you can have, you can have the kitchen here, but they could serve- but they could serve somebody over there if they wanted to.
Sure.
And I mean, so, uh, that really makes more sense to me, if it takes that along, but I don't see adding on anywhere around here where it's gonna make any sense. One or two rooms ain't gonna amount to anything.
Right.
How many kids are we talking? Sixth grade?
It saves the road.
Yeah, okay. So, no, no, you're fine. Now, I just wanted to wait for Natalie's.
Yeah, you know, how many kids are we adding?
For sixth grade, if we bring all the sixth grade?
Sixty to eighty?
Uh, no, there are sixty kids at Nashby. There are probably thirty at Lothrup, and there's probably another ten to fifteen at OCA. So you're talking, you know, probably a hundred and ten kids or so? I mean, there's always that one year where there's always a blip, uh, where there's really a small number of kids, but usually Nashby's at capacity of sixty, and Lothrup's usually half that.
The rooms in the seventh grade hallway, I'm sure they could find use for those, but it's a problem.
Oh, yeah. I mean, there, there's possibility that we end up moving, you know, maybe there's the possibility that these classrooms that are over here end up in the seventh grade, what is now the seventh grade wing, so that maybe this is part of the middle school instead. I, you know, I don't know. I mean, there's all sorts of things you can do. Um, so, but that, those are the things that I think we need to think about, and I, I think we need some, from my standpoint, I think we need some information as to how we want to keep the kids together or not mix in with the, the high school. Um, that would need to come from the administration. And we also need to determine, you know, how feasible is this and how badly do we want it? I, um, I think the, the data is there that having six, seventh, and eighth together makes sense. Um, from a academic and even probably a social.
Well, I tell you, I, I've been out in the Midwest for a while, and that's the way it is out there. Granted, the population is ten times what it is here.
Sure.
But there's five, five, uh, grade schools that feed, you know, five middle schools, and five middle schools feed, you know. In, in the district I was in, there was three high schools, and they're building a fourth, and my daughter's graduating classes just sort of five hundred kids. So I mean, there, uh, we moved five miles down the road, and every one of my kids had to change schools. So I mean, I mean, each one of them had their own facility for each, for certain grades, and I just, they, they mingled them in better. And they're some of the highest-rated schools in the country out in the Midwest.
So maybe what we're-
I know that. I'm just saying, integration worked well that way, is all I know.
Sure.
I know they had a lot more money, trust me, I live there.
What do we, what do we, what do we need to decide right now? I mean, that's what I'm-
Well, I guess one of the things we need-
We need to agree on, we want to move forward with a middle school plan, and where do we want, where are we thinking that will be?
Well, I think we need to ask NBF to update their plan, saying we, we don't want to do the super campus. And we don't want to really add on to the northern end of the school. We want to see what we could do if we added on to the southern side.
Do we have to stick with the same firm?
Well, it's just the firm that the schools, or the, the district has used for eons, and they're, the admin, but that doesn't mean that, you know.
I mean, we could get a bid, right? Put bids out.
Well, we're asking is for a simple, I mean, we're gonna put out the whole-
Put a little bit more on the north end, and then some on this end too. I mean, like, I, if we had a firm who was, you know, a little more creative, maybe they'd come up with a bunch of-
Well, you, so here's the thing, when we, maybe what we need to do is talk to NBF ourselves. Because what happened the last time these were done, is we said to the administration, bring us back plans. And that wasn't talking to the board and what we were thinking of. It was more of a, hey, give us an idea of what this would look like and a, and a cost.
Uh, well, I think it would be helpful to know, how many more classrooms do we think we need? How much space do we think we need? And once they know that number, they know our space needs, then they create a plan-
Okay.
For remodel.
We just signed a, a contract for a, a demographers report that we should get back before, um, the end of the year. So we'll be able to have a, uh, pretty good numbers, certainly for the next five years, and then theoretical numbers, uh, for the six, years six through ten.
Okay.
While we're, uh, thinking out loud, uh, one of the reasons that a middle school's advantageous, at least Mr. Rupples made the argument, is that you can catch him, catch him at the right moment for things like uh, working with their hands or, uh, or labs. Uh, so I would, if we're going to do an expansion, I would like to see dedicated lab space and tech areas for, for kids that age. Before, before they get cynical and we lose them in high school and they don't care anymore.
Well, I think what happens too is if we are able to, um, move programs or classrooms or grade levels to another building, then we could actually do some renovation on this side and make science labs that are the equivalent of two full-size classrooms. Because you need that much space in a, in a, in a dedicated science classroom. So by having an additional building on the same campus, connected by catwalk, catwalks, you're gonna have the ability to do a lot on this side as well.
That's, that's great. I just want to raise those things as something to be considered for needs that kids in that age group would have.
Well, and the other thing we need to consider that I just, I don't know that we've considered this, is that, um, if we do go that way and have catwalks, that doesn't necessarily need to be the middle school. That could be the high school.
Now, what would this do with the, the existing ball fields? Would we be able to move out? Cause I mean, some, for some kids, the, the after-school activities are more important, and, and I understand that, that's what keeps them here.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Keeps them engaged. And I don't want to lose extra ball fields, especially if we're gaining more kids. So that way, we, we end up stripping middle school programs away that are gonna keep these kids engaged.
I don't think we should be designing any building right now, right? I think we talk about what our needs are.
Okay.
And that you have a design firm come up with the ideas, right? We can say what we want, and then they're the ones, they're the architects, they're the ones who are gonna be draw, be able to draw it up based on what's existing here. And if we say we want to save the ball field and, you know, you can only go so far this way.
Well, we still have quite a-
Give them boundaries, and then they come back with-
We still have quite a bit of, of property that we don't necessar- there's the old softball field that isn't, I mean, uh, over by the old football field.
That's the middle school.
I'm just thinking-
Is that what, is that what they do there? So, well, so-
It's more money, though, so we'd have to create a whole new ball field and another lacrosse field, and how can we just keep it all within this smaller footprint?
Well, that might be what-
If your sewer system-
And the sewer and water and expanding electrical and plumbing and-
So, so those are all things to consider, but at this point, yeah, Brett.
Well, a couple thoughts. Uh, one, I mean, a- and maybe this is a question that we need to ask too, is realistically, what is the expected lifespan of, of this building, right? What is the lifespan of all of our buildings? And does it make sense to put a new addition onto a building that becomes considered obsolete in twenty years? Maybe it does, maybe it doesn't. And also, are we, are we not thinking large enough? Are we not thinking broad enough? I mean, it solves one problem. It solves the, the crowding in our elementary schools. It kind of shifts the crowding to this building, so I'm not sure if it fixes it or just creates another problem, but I, I don't know. I, I just wonder if, conceptually, it makes sense, uh, in a perfect world, but I, I guess I just don't know if a middle school solves all of our problems, and if we should look at things more holistically and just make sure that that's the case.
So when you say holistically, what do you mean?
Uh, I mean, for example, our elementary schools are bolder than this building. Um, they, you know, they don't have full gyms, you know, we have a lot of, of wasted, I shouldn't say wasted, but I mean, you know, there's, there's expense, we could save money if we had fewer elementary schools, right? And I know that's always a topic that is like, super polarizing, but it's also a fact.
At least you know that.
But it's also a fact, right, that we could save a bunch of money if we did that, right? So, I mean, you know, and I just think we really need to look at what, what are our weaknesses as a district, and, you know, figure out, is, is it middle school? It probably is, but, you know, are we gonna find out in five years when they start testing again for PCBs that this building has major problems, right? And I don't know, maybe we will, maybe we won't. So I don't know, I just, I have some concerns about whether or not this is the right path to go down without more information about what we have, and can we feel that we're gonna be okay for the length of a bond? That the rest of our schools aren't gonna be, you know, put in jeopardy because we spent all of our money on a middle school, and then, oh, by the way, now we need five roofs and four boilers, and we have no money to do it.
So I would say that, you know, like, with federal contracts, you have, they provide several options, right? And that's where I would see this going, is, you know, option one is do nothing, right? Option two is add on. Option three, knock it all down and put a new building in. Um, I think we have to have, we, in order to make a good educated decision, is to know all those things. I don't think we just want to have one design.
I don't think there's any way you could knock this guy building down. It costs you, it costs you four million just to get rid of the building.
Wouldn't it be nice to just know that and say, here, this is why we've chosen not to do it?
I just was looking into, we were, my boss and I were looking to buy a building and rent one, and just rehab it, make, put a new roof on it. You're looking at three million just to clean it out and put a roof on it. That's like turning it down.
Hybrid project doubled in cost when they started to take the stuff down.
Right, when they got into it, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm writing down, uh, the options that you gave, which was do nothing, middle school, uh, build a whole new building, or build a whole-
Knock down, build a whole new-
Right, new high school. I'm also gonna write down the polarizing subject of one elementary school.
But then that would require us to build another elementary school. So, what we're doing is removing students from the schools, giving those schools more space, and adding a hundred people more here, and putting all the resources here.
So that was one of the things we found out that we, we can't necessarily do. So, um, the east wing, which only is one level, so I thought we could go up a second level, is not conducive to that. That is actually spelled out in one of these reports. Um, that they could not go up, just the way it's built. Yeah, structurally, it would not be good. So, and I don't think, is there a reason, can you not go three stories of the high school, or can you in?
There might be someone-
Elevator?
It would depend upon-
Forty feet?
It would depend upon what the local expectations are, cause there's plenty of, there's plenty of schools that are three stories or higher.
Three stories? Okay, okay. So, there's also the subject of having K through twelve school, like they do in New York. And bringing everybody together. This campus is big enough for that, I suppose.
Well, if you were to do, if you were to have it all on the same campus, not necessarily in the same building,
Yep.
but on the same footprint, that would be amazing. But that's a very big thing.
That is a huge thing.
Well, and to what Brett said about demographics, Renee said that he was gonna provide that information. I mean, we know that population in Vermont is increasing at a dec- or decreasing rate, right? It's just slowly doing this. Um, so I don't know if we're gonna have a-
We've been fortunate with our school numbers here, but there, there are lots of schools that are losing students.
Yeah, and some, a lot of that population increase is retirees too.
Right, that's true. That's true.
Well, we, we also struggle with getting good staff too, right? I mean, it, it's hard to find people, or, you know, that-
That aren't retired, that want to work in the school?
That, that don't want to retire, yeah, exactly. Yeah.
Yeah.
Lori, should, Brett's other point about a cost assessment for the other buildings is worth writing down.
Um, yeah, so I, I'm thinking, as far as the cost assessment is concerned, I think we have that day, the data, because every school building has a, um, facilities, uh, plan. And so that's what we see every year when Brenda gives us the, what they want to do for the summer. You know, she tells us everything that they're gonna do, and that's all based on, on that facilities plan and, and how old things are, and blah, 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 blah. And hopefully, um, if they can come back to our October meeting with the, with the five most important things that need to be done at each school, that might help with our, our question as to how we move forward with this. But, um, at some point, we're gonna have to take another, we're gonna have to take a step, and, and and so maybe what we want to do is just wait for the assessment data that you're waiting for, the demographic data, and then bring this back again. Yeah.
The big, uh, the big tower out there, the big silo?
Oh, yeah, with the wood pellets?
Yes. So, does that heat the whole school?
Uh, no, actually, they were just discussing that, uh, where were they discussing that? It does not heat the whole school. Um, they can't do that with just those two wood boilers, so there still is a, um, other, uh, oil burn, oil.
Cause they just put a whole brain new-
They only use one at a time, though, yeah.
They just put a whole brain new system that racks off pellets that heats that whole good big three-story brick building. That's why I was curious. I didn't realize what that silo was until I saw theirs.
Yeah, it's wood pellets, and, um, I think we still have the oil backup just in case something gums up or we, you know, tends to happen with pellets.
That one so far, it's a super professional, it's not as cool as it is.
How long has it been there?
They just put it in.
See, that's why-
But I mean, just last winter, they just put it in, but it works. Like, every room was so much warmer than it was with the oil. I mean, the whole school was actually warm, that's why I asked, cause I didn't even know what the silo was.
Right, yeah.
Until I saw theirs.
Yeah, and it may not do the whole building just because of the way it's all broken up.
True.
So, but I'm not sure about that, but yeah. Alright, so cost assessment on each building. Okay, well, then, um, we will wait for, uh, the demographic data. And we'll try and come up with some information as to how many students sixth grade looks like. And how we might want to reconfigure things around and then-
What our space needs.
Yeah, what our space needs are. Okay. And bring that back to all of you. Probably will not be in October, um, but maybe.
Yeah, the demographics, no, but I can give you the sixth grade numbers right now.
Oh, cool. Okay. Um, while he's pulling up sixth grade numbers, um, I want everyone to know that at our October first meeting, we are inviting all the legislators to come. And I'm also debating, so tell me your pleasure, about inviting people who are running for those seats. So if there are contested races, I'm asking, I wanted to ask those other people to come as well. Um, and one of the reasons is, is because the Whiting Sudbury person is not rerunning, and there's only one person running, so I would like to invite Mr. Casey to come. Um, but I know that there's a contested race here in Brandon. I don't know about in Pittsburgh, um, but because Butch is getting done and Alicia is running, should we invite her? Yes. So is that okay if I invite people who are running for the, you know, I'm not, I'm going to be very specific to them that they're not here to, to put for, you know,
To campaign?
Campaign. But they're here to, they're here to listen to what we need to tell them about education and what we need from them once they head back to Montpelier.
Yeah.
Is, is that okay?
I think you should phrase it, I mean, we're, we're, the legislators are coming, and we're talking to our legislators, right?
Yep.
People who are running can come and listen if they want, right?
Okay.
Um, they don't need to come. I don't know, I just, um-
I just figured if they heard all the information from us, if for some reason there is an upset, I mean, I don't know what's gonna happen in the Brandon race. I don't know if there's any other contested races out there, I haven't really looked.
But I think they should understand that the legislators that are here are the people we are here to talk to.
Yeah, but in the case of Pittsburgh, which we know which one-
But you won't be going back anyway, so, you know, but, so that's why I'm kind of involving everybody.
Yeah.
Um, cause we don't normally talk to them until February, and that's too late this year. They need to know what we need now, rather than later.
If they're interested in knowing what we're talking about, they can come.
Yeah.
Not that it would change them.
So, okay, so that's, so anyway, so October first, um, that's probably going to be most of our meeting. I mean, we'll have our regular, uh, information, but we may not have monitoring reports and all of that, depending on how long our, our meeting runs. Um, cause I really hope we can have a dynamic, uh, conversation with them. Especially since Peter Conlin is one of our legislators, and he is the Chair of the House Ed Committee. So he's an important, and then, um, a couple of the senators are on the Senate Education Committee as well. So, important that we talk to them, and let it, you know, they need to fight for us and can't just all be about chitting and gawing. It's true.
It's true. It's true.
It's very true, so. Numbers?
I'm showing 75.
75 for next year?
Mm-hmm.
All right. And actually, that makes sense because the sixth grade was a a small, um, that's the small year next year for, okay.
75 across all.
All three schools. Usually it's around 100, though.
Yeah, that, that is a difference.
It's kind of like the current 10th grade. There's like only 60 of those kids.
Yeah, there's 98 fifth graders, so.
Okay, so, yeah. Okay. All right, so then we'll pull together some information for that. Oh, uh, moving on, unless somebody has anything else they want to add to that at this point. Um, there is the Stafford Tech update.
Yeah, so I li, I wanted y'all to see uh the numbers of our students that are um that are enrolled currently in Stafford. And then also note that one of the, one of the representatives that uh to the Rab or to the Regional Advisory Board is one of our students, Alyssa Raymond. Um, on page three uh of the, of the, this packet, it'll show that we have a total number of 39 students um that are currently uh attending Stafford. And so, um, which is a pretty good number. Doesn't show uh grade level, but I would assume half.
Juniors and seniors.
Juniors and seniors.
Renee?
Yes.
How many kids weren't able to get in?
That I do not have, but that's a number that I'm very interested in as well.
I think it's on here, right? It's 379 applications and 222 acceptances.
Yeah, I, we, I'd want to know how many of our students weren't able to get in.
Yeah, I mean.
And some of those are double, like if you, when kids apply, they may apply for two different and they may not get into one, but they get into another one. So you have to be careful of the duplicates there.
It also shows that they have several programs that are missing teachers? Is that what that says? Is that?
Yeah, the nail tech, we were looking for a nail tech for the, anyway.
So it shows that they canceled the the video leadership and marketing and uh no health career twos, two instructors.
So I have a comment from a parent um whose student attends and they have great difficulty um talking to the guidance counselor and having this guidance, OV guidance counselor and Stafford guidance counselor be on the same page. And, um, you know, the student is is college-bound even though they're at Stafford. So it's important to this student to have that, that communication between the two schools and to make them also feel like they're part of.
Otter Valley?
The senior group, yeah. And be involved and included in communications and senior information.
So here's my question, based on your question, is that if a student of ours is at Stafford, can they just work with the Stafford guidance counselor and move forward that way? Do they have to come back to Otter Valley? I don't know that.
They've been told to work with Stafford and then when it comes to college, you have to work with Meredith.
Okay.
So it's.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Okay.
So for their career stuff, work with Stafford or graduation, whatever the case may be, and the, but if you want.
Just for their Stafford.
Right, if you want.
If you're, if you're college-bound, you have to work with Otter Valley.
Okay.
That's my understanding and that it's been a struggle. And that they're not always kept up to date on college um events that are happening here, such as in the evening.
Right, cause you have to go through the, right now, or at least it was this way last year, was that everything that's going on for seniors is in their's.
Advisory?
Google Classroom.
In the Google Classroom.
It's in their Google classroom and so uh parents are not, don't necessarily have, they don't have access to the Google Classroom.
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
And that's a problem.
Yeah, and, you know, some of these Stafford kids are going to a college for welding or whatever it is, but they um, they don't always do that, so.
Sure.
Um, the other.
Same thing with for scholarships. If you want scholarships, you have to be in the Google Classroom and that's a pain in the butt.
Hmm, yeah. So I don't know how you can better coordination and communication between guidance counselors.
Well, that, and that's also been a historical struggle. Once our kids go to Stafford, they, it, the communication between OV and Stafford, even if it's just about bus runs, is not good.
We're working on that one, that specific one right now.
Okay, that's good.
Well, I guess the the other reason I ask is they also have to find a co-op their senior year and they don't, they're not always getting a lot of help just at Stafford, so can the guidance? I don't, I don't know how they can help, but um especially if they're a college-bound kid.
If nobody out of motive, I'll take them, they'll come down and visit me.
Do you know any welders?
Welders are hard to, Murphy's metals.
We weld.
One of the things that I'm, um, I have scheduled uh this semester and then next semester, uh, I I've met with Michael last uh last week and I'm setting aside time during this semester to, between now, between the beginning of October and the end of January to meet with every individual senior. Um, so that that way I can ask them about their experience and is there anything that we can do to, uh, you know, improve the experience for those who come behind?
Right.
And so I'll be able to ask these questions.
He's meeting with all the. Right, because if you don't have your co-op, you're just sitting around at Stafford, not doing anything. So what could OV be doing instead of that student going home and not having anything else to do?
A lot of that is just making sure that we are aware of what the issues are so we can attempt to address them.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, other business.
Yes, uh, for those of you who didn't make it, the uh, the adult musical was this weekend and our board chair was singing and dancing all over the stage. And the uh, I have to say, the show exceeded my expectations.
Ah, come on, it was awesome! Yeah, well, good, well, we're glad that you enjoyed it. And yes, I did dance and sing, sure.
I have an announcement.
Yes.
Um, so we came upon a really awesome grant opportunity called the Digital Equity Infrastructure and Services Grant. Um, and it's out of the 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 US Department of Commerce and they allow local education agencies, like a school, district, or supervisory union, um, apply for it. So uh, one of the main reasons why I, we met as a team to to come up with a, uh, come up with a plan to apply for it was that there was an awful lot of, well, first of all, there's an awful lot of money available and then two, there's an awful lot of uh offers that they will extend, anywhere from 150 to 200 awards will be made. So what we're hoping to do is to up our game as far as our devices for our kids and for our teachers, making sure that we have um hotspots for our students and for, and for our teachers so that when they go home, they have the opportunity to um, to to always be online. One of the things that I think is kind of innovative about it is that because the money that, uh, the potential money behind it is that we may actually be able to run fiber from each of our buildings um within the supervisory union. So that that way we're always connected on our own set of, set of fiber, which would be fantastic.
Yeah.
Along the way, since we pass by our town buildings on a regular basis, we want to be able to include libraries, the town offices, community centers as well. That's where our kids hang out. That's where our, that's where our um community is. And so our goal is to submit this grant. Unfortunately, we, we learned about it like last week and so, um, the reason why I'm bringing it up, I guess I should tell you. So it's, over the course of five years, uh, we are asking for $5.8 million. Um, there is a 10%.
Match?
10% match, but that's gonna be over five years. Um, and so let's say we get it and this board or any of our three boards decide we don't want to do the match, um, we can say no, thank you, uh, and uh move on. But the, uh, so I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of it um because the the deadline is next week uh and they are gonna actually announce the awards starting in November, so it's a really quick turnaround.
So the 10% match would have to come from where?
Would have to come from the school district. Although, we could probably raise it from, from external companies or because we're helping out the towns and other places, they might be willing to help us out as well.
I, I, that's why I probably agree, if you agree to do it and also you gotta come up with it and you're counting on the voters doing it, that could be a problem.
Yeah.
Well, so it'd be 500, if, you said 5.8 million?
Yeah.
So 580,000 would be the 10% match, am I right about that?
Right, yes.
Okay, and that's over however many years.
Yeah.
All right, 100,000.
And given that we, we're going to be spending money on devices, those are, it.
It could.
There's, we'll be able to, we should be able to find the matching funds because we're not spending our own money on certain things that we would have spent it on anyway.
Sure, so we turn, we move some of that money from one line item to the matching stack.
Would it help the uh, the application strength to partner with the towns in?
I have a letter, I have a letter uh and an email ready to go tomorrow morning so that they can, so that they can, asking for their support.
Cool. I think it's a great idea.
Are you sending it to the fire departments?
Um, I can.
I would send it to Brandon Fire District Number One.
For sure.
Anything else? Okay.
Oh, yeah, um, first, nice weather home game with the lights on, it looked great, the field looked great.
There was two games, you saw both? You didn't come to the one in the rain?
I did not.
Oh, come on, I was there, sucked. Uh, the rain did anyway, but the lights were awesome. And the second game was really good, cause there was no rain.
And they won, didn't they?
And they won.
They won.
Yeah. So, yeah, so very cool. And uh, hopefully they'll get to have one more game under the lights um during.
Homecoming?
Uh, no, not, they can't do it during homecoming because of the homecoming dance. So, uh, but hopefully during a playoff game or maybe even um something else, but yeah. Hopefully they'll get to use them one more time. So, okay, well, hearing nothing further from the rest of you, uh. Except for that.
I was looking at the scores.
Um, October 1st is our next meeting here with all the legislators, hopefully. Uh, and if they can't make it in person, I will um ask them to attend via Zoom. Um, and we'll go from there. So I would um accept someone to say that they want to leave now.
I moved to adjourn.
There you go. Second, all those in favor? There we go, all right, good night, everyone, thank you.